Good evening and welcome to the City of Westminster Common Council Candidates Forum. I'm Charles Harrison, President of the Board of Directors for the Community Media Center. Tonight's forum is being held at the John Street Quarters here in Westminster. The program was being streamed live on the Community Media Center website at carrollmediacenter.org and will be rebroadcast on cable channels 19, 23, and our brand-new high-definition channel, 1086. The Community Media Center has partnered with the Carroll County Times to provide this program as a public service to our community. I will now turn this program over to our moderator for this evening, Mr. Bob Bluebaugh, editor of the Carroll County Times. Bob?
Thank you, Charles. As moderator for this evening, I will introduce each of the candidates. Each candidate will have two minutes for his opening statement. Following the forum introductions, I'll ask the first question, and each candidate will then have two minutes to answer the question. All candidates will answer the identical questions; there will be no debate; this is an informational forum. At the conclusion of the question period, before the ending of the forum, each candidate will have two minutes for a summary statement. All responses will be timed, and the timekeeper will give candidates a signal when 30 seconds remain. The timekeeper will ring a bell two to three seconds after the final stop signal is given, and the moderator may immediately interrupt the candidates and discontinue the statement, if needed. The questions have been selected from those submitted in advance to the Carroll County Times, to the Community Media Center, and from tonight's live audience. We've already gotten quite a few questions, so it should be a great forum. The forum is being recorded, so we do ask that everyone turn their cellphones off and that attendees refrain from applause or making noise during the forum, or doing anything visible or audible to express support or opposition to any candidate during the forum. So let's begin. Each candidate may now present a two-minute opening statement, and we'll start with Ms. Kate Carter.
Hi, I'm Kate Carter. I want to thank Mr. Harrison from the Community Media Center, as well as Mr. Bluebaugh, our moderator from the Times. Just a little bit about me: I grew up in Westminster. My mother was a counselor at Key. My father was a professor at McDaniel College. I have a master's in information technology, and my husband, Tom Gordon, and I live in downtown Westminster and enjoy what our city has to offer. I am a former member of the Westminster Public Safety Advisory Council, have co-chair at the Carroll Hospital Auxiliary Outside Ventures Committee, and support the Boys and Girls Club. Safety: I could speak about safety all evening, but the bottom line is, it's important. We need to protect those who protect us and provide strong support for our police and emergency services to support retention and recruitment to make our city a safer place for all. Community: Everyone here is a part of our community, and we need to make Main Street and downtown more economically vibrant while keeping our small-town charm. We need to create One Westminster, a collaborative environment between the government and our citizens to promote transparency and responsive communication. I will support recreational activities and hope to earn us the Healthy City Award. I look forward to this evening's forum, interacting with my fellow candidates. I believe that everyone here has a unique skill set that will benefit our city. Regardless of the outcome of the election, I commend everyone here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Stephen Colletta.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Harrison and Mr. Bluebaugh. We appreciate you hosting this informational forum for the citizens. My name is Stephen Colletta, and I am a candidate for City Council. I'm a native of Mount Airy and moved to Westminster in 2015. My background is in economic development. I was previously the Director of Economic Development for the town of Sykesville, AKA the coolest small town in America. I'm currently the Business Consultant for Carroll County for the Small Business Development Center. I work with entrepreneurs and existing business owners to help support their businesses in starting, growing, and overcoming challenges. My focuses, as a candidate for City Council, are on safety. I've been endorsed by the Fraternal Order of Police of Carroll County for my support for our law enforcement officers and providing the resources and training that they need to successfully protect our community. Responsible and transparent government decision-making. I believe that open lines of communication and a willingness to learn from each other and take ideas from all sources is incredibly important for anyone in leadership. And finally, community focus. I have spent my entire professional career as a Main Street manager and as an economic development professional and in revitalizing communities, and I believe that Westminster has incredible potential. And if we work together, learn from each other, and are open to hearing what everyone needs, I believe that we can find solutions and opportunities that work for everyone. Thank you.
Mayor Kevin Earl Dayhoff.
Hi, I'm Kevin Dayhoff. I'm here this evening because I believe those of us who have benefited from growing up and living in a wonderful community like Westminster and Carroll County must live a life of service to that community and participate in perpetuating the maintenance and the progress of that community. There are many ways that you can serve our community: service clubs, the fire department, the military, community groups, recreational programs, volunteering at a nonprofit organization, or helping out in your house of worship. I'm active in the community. I love Westminster, and I really like being involved in government. At this point in time, I'd really like to take another turn in City Hall because I think I can make a difference. Historically, different folks in the community have taken turns guiding the city forward with fresh ideas, new perspectives, and a fresh coat of paint. To that end, I offer experience, energy, accessibility, vision, fiscally prudent, and open and affirming socially responsible leadership. I have a thorough knowledge of the history and traditions of the city with a keen eye for some future changes. It would be an honor to have another opportunity to take another turn as a Westminster elected official. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mrs. Ann Thomas Gilbert.
Hi, my name is Ann Thomas Gilbert. I am seeking one of the positions on this Westminster City Council because I care about our community, and I care about the direction our community will go in the future. By attending most of the City Council meetings for the past three years, working here in Carroll County, and volunteering here in Westminster for the past 30 years, I have gained a perspective of the needs as well as the strengths of our community. Several things of particular interest to me: improving the economic development of downtown Westminster. That includes, for me, addressing the vacancies of the businesses in our downtown, encouraging new business development, as well as supporting those businesses that we already have in downtown Westminster. We need to ensure our current infrastructure is addressing the needs of our citizens, as well as public safety, something that's a general concern to everyone. We need to address the drug problem, the mental health issues that we have, as well as the homelessness that's occurring in our city. Addressing these issues, I feel, will in turn address many of the safety concerns, as well as the perceptions of safety in the community. I also believe that better communication is needed regarding updating the citizens about the important issues occurring, whether it be in regards to safety or just what's going on in Westminster City as a whole. As a lifelong resident of Westminster, I'm concerned about the city. I promise to listen to your concerns as citizens that are expressed by the residents, and I will present your concerns, as well as welcome any suggestions and input you have.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Jessica M. Laird.
Thank you, Mr. Bluebaugh and Mr. Harrison. We appreciate both of your time. My name is Jessica Laird. I am honored and excited to be sitting up here in such great company. I think you all are... I've gotten to all the candidates over the last few weeks and have really enjoyed what I've learned. My husband and I have been proud residents of downtown Westminster for nearly six years, and since then have really made this city home. We work here, we live here, we play here, my kids go to school here. We aren't from Maryland, and when people ask us about any other part of Maryland, we tell them, "We don't know. We don't leave Westminster." Everything we need is here, and we love it. I have a strong desire to get involved, and I have ever since my first stroll down Main Street. It was the day I closed on my house, and we were hungry, so we found our way to Sam's Bagels and got a delicious bagel sandwich. Unfortunately, they're not around anymore. After six years, I feel like it's my time to jump in headfirst. My background in architectural design, graphic design, marketing, and planning, and my experience in promoting the growth and development of the small towns that I've lived in in the past drive my passion and excitement for the future of this wonderful place. I can't wait to get started, representing the wonderful residents and businesses of Westminster, working to make this great place even greater. I believe I bring a fresh perspect... excuse me, a fresh perspective. Fostering a community built on transparency that encourages participation is important to me. Communication is key. Supporting the public safety sector and showing ultimate support for those that we entrust to protect our community, our home, is of the utmost importance. And promoting the strategic growth of a safe and prosperous downtown district is key. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. And finally, Councilman Greg Pecoraro.
Thank you, Bob. Good evening, and thanks to the Community Media Center and the Carroll County Times for sponsoring coverage of this election. Thanks also to the other candidates here tonight, some of whom I've known for many years, and some whom I've just met recently. I've enjoyed spending time with all of you, and I think it's been a great election campaign. It's also great to see so many people interested in the future of our community here tonight and watching at home on television, because that's what this election is about. It's everyone's chance to have a say in what the future of Westminster will look like. We live in a great town, but it could be better. Tonight, we candidates are going to talk about how we think we can contribute to that better Westminster we all want. I'm looking forward to that discussion now and in the months and years ahead. I'm Greg Pecoraro, and I've had the privilege of serving you on Westminster's Common Council on and off since 1994. Over the years, I've played a leading role in several important initiatives here in the city, and I'm proud of what we've accomplished by working together on a shared vision of Westminster as a safe and enjoyable place to live and work. Despite our hard work over the years, the city still faces many challenges. We're still working to ensure a water supply that will allow us to do all the things we need to do here in Westminster to provide the right mix of economic opportunities, amenities, and housing. We've got to police our city in a different way, to make sure that everyone feels safe in their homes and in our public areas. And we must create more opportunities for businesses to locate and grow here, to provide employment for our residents, so so many of us don't have to drive down the road to other employment centers. I look forward to working on these challenges with my current partners in city government and the people you will elect next Tuesday. I hope I'll be one of them, and that you will give me another four years to work for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's begin with the first question, and we'll start with Mr. Colletta this time. So what is the most pressing issue facing Westminster, and what will you be advocating to address it?
Thanks, Bob. As far as I'm concerned, the most pressing issue facing Westminster right now, as many of you can probably guess, is public safety. And it's not simply the crime statistics for our city. It's the perception of public safety and the way that contributes to the story that we tell when businesses and residents look to move here, look to settle down here, look to raise families here, and look to explore their future here. Working with our new police chief and the other members of our law enforcement team here in Westminster, I believe that there's an incredible opportunity to enhance the perception of safety in our community, to lower the real crime statistics in our city, and also to partner together our law enforcement with business owners, residents, and visitors alike, to bring Westminster together and build a brighter future for everyone. As far as actual support for our law enforcement, I am not the expert. I do not have a background in police work or criminal justice, so I will be looking to our experts and leaning heavily on our police officers to tell us what they need. We'll be looking at innovative solutions and traditional law enforcement techniques to make our city the great place it can be. And as a City Councilman, if elected, I would be working with the rest of the council to ensure that our dedicated men and women in law enforcement have the resources they need to pursue Westminster's greatest potential.
Thank you. Mayor Dayhoff?
I tend to believe that it's public safety. The Public Works Department, the Westminster Police and Fire Department play a basic and critical role in our quality of life, and they need our renewed support. It's our town; I think we have a right to feel safe in our own community. We need to seize the opportunities and the fresh perspectives that are brought forward by our new police chief. I think we not only need to address crime, especially petty quality-of-life crime, with renewed vigor, but I think we also need to address day-to-day quality-of-life issues: better lighting by replacing many of our street lights with better LEDs, more parking and reminding folks that congregate downtown that with their rights come responsibilities. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
I'm gonna almost say ditto. Yes, I do. I would also say that public safety is one of the things forefront for me also. But for me, that also means addressing the drug issue, the homelessness issue, and the mental health, because I think all three are intertwined in each other. Supporting Police Chief Ledwell right now, I think he's doing a great job. I think things are moving forward with that, and he has a great perception of what Westminster needs and what is occurring right now. But I also believe that we need to work together with other services that we already currently have in Westminster and in Carroll County so that we can address our drug problem and our homelessness. The fact that our current library in downtown Westminster is being used as a location for many of our homeless to stay needs to also be addressed in another way with some creative thinking and find an alternative to that. Again, mental health also needs to be incorporated with that, and again, we have lots of sources already that we have here in our county and in our city, and we just need to tap into those and look at a more inventive and creative way of addressing that, so we can help with not only the crime, but the perception of that crime.
Thank you. Ms. Laird?
So I'm gonna have to agree. Public safety is one of the top concerns for me, but in speaking about public safety, I think there are a number of things that could contribute to a safer, both perceived and in reality, safer city for the residents and businesses here in the community. Our water issue is definitely a problem, and I think that feeds into this concern of public safety. It feeds into economic development and growth in the downtown, which then leads to filling vacancies in the downtown, which means more eyes on the street during the day, more people on the street during the day. Less crime happens when more people are around. So I think it's critically important that we move forward with the project that has been proposed and is being worked on currently, the Water Reuse Project, so that we can then focus more on the economic development of the downtown and the community to try to remediate some of these issues. And along with that, I think Mr. Dayhoff mentioned lighting as well, and a number of other, you know, small kind of upgrades to the area that can happen and help. And I think once we clear those issues up in the heart of the city, I think it will only perpetuate through the entire city. So I look forward to working on those projects, some that are existing and some new, if I am elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pecoraro?
Thank you. So one of the things you find when you're on the City Council is that there's no one thing that you get to focus all your time and energy on. You know, the city has a lot of challenges, as well as a lot of great things going on, and so you need to be able to sort of multitask a bit, to be able to worry about all these things. Public safety is clearly one of the top concerns in our city. I'm proud to have been one of the people that hired Chief Ledwell and brought him in to do the important work that he's doing to revamp the way we police downtown Westminster. I think that the things that the chief is putting in place are some of the answers to what we need to do, along with a comprehensive look at a number of other issues. But I think that the other thing that we really need to pay attention to, that citizens really need to understand, is the city's water situation. One of the things that I'm proud of over the last several years is how we've managed our water situation. You know, unlike a lot of other cities, we don't live on a big river, so we don't have a large supply of water. All of our water comes from sticking straws in the ground and sucking it up out of the aquifer. So we're constantly looking for new sources, and we've done about all of that we can do. We've got a few more wells we can bring online, but we've pretty much reached the limit there. We've got some exciting new initiatives, but most importantly, we've been managing our supply to make sure that the right kind of development takes place in Westminster, to attract businesses first, that provide jobs and give people the kind of amenities that they want to have here in our town: restaurants to visit, shops to visit, things like that, places where they can have a good job. And then housing comes after that to make sure that we're allowing more people to come into the city as we move forward. So I think all of these things are of a piece; we've got to work on them all together, but we've been spending a great deal of time, and we've got to continue to focus our energy on securing the city's water supply.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Well, I'm in agreeance with what everyone said this evening. I would like to look at our biggest issue as a whole. This is a problem; it's not just one thing. Of course, safety is a huge issue. The recent changes that have been made on Main Street and from Chief Ledwell and his police department have certainly done a great job increasing the awareness in our community, and we need to keep our... continue to keep our community safe. It's just not about perception. I want every resident to feel safe in their homes while walking on the street, while walking up and down the road, but also to that, as far as things like crosswalks. Yes, we need better lighting, but we also need crosswalks on our streets and have the proper lights, timing, in order for the citizens to be able to cross the streets safely. That all goes into it. Of course, economic development and revitalization, we need to continue to support our businesses. It's just, I feel, it's a combination of things; that is not just one answer. It's an open-ended question, but there are multiple aspects of the situation that we can all use to have this come into play.
Thank you. Okay, to start with Mayor Dayhoff. Everyone talks about revitalizing downtown Westminster; we've already touched on that a little bit tonight. What specific ideas do you have, and how will you encourage new businesses to open on Main Street? How will you promote the local businesses?
The question's complex, and I'm not sure two minutes can do it, but there are... when it comes to economic development, there is a comprehensive strategy that I've written about in the past, and there's four points: design, economic restructuring, organization, and promotion. And that's pretty much in alphabetical order; they're all equal parts. There are eight Main Street principles involved. Main Street approach is comprehensive; a single project can't revitalize an entire downtown. The Main Street approach is incremental; small projects make a big difference; we've seen that. Main Street approach is self-help based, and that's to get some help for the business owners to maintain their profit margins and their viability. It's also about a private-public partnership. The city needs to be involved and needs to adopt strategies that will help promote businesses in the downtown area. We also need to identify and capitalize upon existing local assets. Historically, Westminster has always been a restaurant destination. Back in the days when horses could only travel 10 miles a day, that's why Westminster's 10 miles away from Rikers Town, so we can capitalize upon our restaurant base. We also want to look at quality-based approaches. We also want to look at change. Changing attitudes, habits, perceptions is essential to obtain support for and sustain the revitalization process. The Main Street approach is also action-oriented. Frequent, visible changes and look, special events and activities on Main Street will reinforce that perception of positive change in the community.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
I'm gonna ask you to repeat that question.
Everyone talks about revitalizing downtown Westminster. So what specific ideas do you have, and how will you encourage new businesses to open on Main Street, and then how will you be able to promote the local businesses?
My personal thoughts is that Westminster needs a new economic developer, or a economic developer. I think we need, as a city, a focus on someone who specifically that is their job, that is what their focus is, to promote not only Westminster, but the other businesses outside of Westminster. Maybe Baltimore, maybe another state that can also bring in a branch of another business to Westminster. Another thought that the economic developer could possibly do is also work on marketing Ting and marketing what benefits that we already have in this city. Not necessarily me personally, because personally, I have a 40-hour-a-week job, so to put that much time and energy that I believe is needed to see our city grow, I think needs to be concentrated on a specific position.
Thank you. Ms. Laird?
Revitalizing downtown is a big job, and there are lots of things that can be done, but I think it's all about starting small and seeing where we can go. So I, at one point, asked some members of the city staff if there was a listing of businesses in the city, just a full listing of every business that resides here in Westminster. And the answer I got was, "We don't necessarily keep a list." And I think that's unfortunate. I think that's a great place to start. We should be proud of the businesses that are here. I think we should make sure we're promoting the businesses that are here. I think we should make those businesses aware that we are grateful that they reside here in our city, and make sure they feel like they're an important part of the community. I've spoken to a number of business owners over the last few weeks who've said, "You know, I wish I could vote; I wish I lived here and had more of a voice." So finding a way to give them more of a voice, a downtown business council of some sort, or a group for those business owners, to really feel like they can come together and have a voice and be a part of what's happening in a more specific way. Connecting the college, McDaniel College, to the downtown, I think, could be a great asset. There's already a lot of work happening that has really kicked up more over the last few years. There's a McDaniel and Main group that meets now pretty regularly, and they've got some great ideas to continue to promote that. But making sure those students are coming downtown and are using those businesses, you know, to attract more business, so that other businesses want to be there, want to be a part of that, I think we need to just increase the foot traffic in those businesses. Promoting the fiber network, you know, we put a lot of money, as a city, into the infrastructure for this network, and I think finding a way to save the money, some money, for the city by adding more customers to the fiber project would be great, but then also using that as an economic development tool to attract businesses.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you. So certainly, economic development and revitalizing the downtown is something that we've spent a lot of time on over many years, and it kind of comes in waves. Sometimes the downtown is doing a little bit better than other times, and unfortunately, you know, we don't, you know, it's not as even as we would like it to be. I think the real solution, and something we've tried to do and we're still working towards, is to create a critical mass of people living and working downtown, because that's what's really going to support the businesses and shops that are down there. So one of the things we really need to do is redevelop some old properties downtown in a way that will create multi-use opportunities in those places: people living on the upper stories, maybe some office space on maybe the second floor, and then commercial or retail space on the first floor. That's what we've been trying to work towards. And I'll tell you, a few years ago, well, several years ago now, we put together a plan. We put together a plan of all the developable properties downtown, and we reached out to the development community in the whole Mid-Atlantic area, and we invited them all to come to Westminster. We showed them the opportunities; we introduced them to the property owners. They said, "Wow, this is great. We've never had a community do this before. We're excited about doing business in Westminster." And they started talking to the owners about buying these properties and what they could do with them. Then the recession hit, and of course, all those plans were put aside for a while. People are starting to invest again, and I think now's the time to revive that proposal, and we've been talking about how we do that. And, you know, we've got, the city's got a lot of property it owns downtown. We bought the old Southern States property, and that's been a parking lot right outside here, right outside the fire hole here, which we used when we built the garages, so that people would have a place to park while the garages were going up. The plan was always to develop those. The time has come to develop those. There's some other properties, we all know what they are downtown, that aren't being used at their highest and best purpose. And what I'd like to see over the next few years is how we can really make that happen as the economy changes, to make sure that Westminster does start growing up and creating those kinds of opportunities downtown. The other big part of that is we've got to have a better connection... The other big part of that is we've got to have a better connection between Main Street and 140, so we draw people into downtown. 27 is our natural gateway, and we've got to work on that.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Downtown and Main Street, it's the heart of our city. And the heart of our city is supporting the small businesses. Small businesses are the ones that basically keep us going. We want to support them, and it's in the city's best interest to help them. They help drive tourism, drive revenue, and provides a good pedestrian experience. We did some research, and in 1994, there was the Greater Westminster Development Corporation that was created, and it was, it was created in a way to assist the Westminster area businesses, basically to create a positive environment for business development, retention, and growth. It's no longer active, so my suggestion would be to revitalize that and use that in conjunction with a hybrid position within the city as a economic development slash communications director, which then can relay the information and get the word out there that Westminster's great. Honestly, I, I think we should also capitalize on Ting with the technology and utilize that, you know, ma, make us more transparent, get the word out. I know the city's in the process of updating their website, but make the website and create it in such a way where we are going to draw people in, make them want to move here, make them want to visit here, and let basically the world know that Westminster's hip, right? Because that's what we want to be, is hip. And I think that all those things combined will make it a, a great thing to do.
Thank you. Mr. Collet?
All right. Thank you. I, I'm glad I got to answer this question last, because I got to hear what everyone else had to say. And there were a lot of good ideas, even in this room. Westminster is a designated Main Street community, and the Main Street approach to neighborhood revitalization is time-tested and proven. Mr. Dayhoff touched on a lot of great points about the Main Street approach and what that entails. Speaking personally and moving forward with a plan for revitalizing Westminster, the first thing we need is a comprehensive and unified vision for what we want our downtown to look like. I imagine that that vision includes preserving all of the rich history that we have in our downtown, but also identifying opportunities to move forward and bring new businesses and new visitors and customers and people to support what we're trying to build. Once we have that unified vision, public engagement is critical. Developing and enhancing our volunteer ecosystem is going to be a key component of actually successfully executing the Main Street program and having a qualified individual that can handle talent management and actually assign and recruit volunteers that know what they're doing and have something really valuable to offer to a specific element or project. And finally, events are, are a big deal. Having attended a number of national Main Street conferences, I can tell you that everyone wants to talk about events. But as far as I'm concerned, and the approach that I implemented when I managed the Main Street in Sykesville, was that we didn't do events unless they achieved something, unless they drove money for our businesses or for our fundraising for future endeavors or our mission.
Thank you. For Mrs. Gilbert. How do you propose balancing the demands for increased services without raising taxes, assuming all the fat has already been trimmed from the, from the budget?
I believe, as a person who sits on the council, that is not just a sole responsibility, that is also something that many of the council sits down to talk amongst themselves. So that's going to take people who work together, people who will brainstorm where things possibly can be cut as far as the budget and where things can also, the money can be transferred to another department that is in need. You actually really threw me off on that question. So I believe collaboration is one of the major keys for working with that.
Thank you.
And I'm going to shorten that answer.
Mrs. Laird?
Demands for increased services without increasing taxes. Give me more, I want to pay less. That sounds great. I would love to pay less in taxes and get more, pay the same and get more. That would be wonderful. In my opinion, it's a matter of looking at the services that we provide in the city and the efficiencies of those services. You know, the question is, is there someone else who can provide it at a better rate and do it just as well or better? Are there opportunities to outsource some of the additional services that the citizens of this great town and the businesses in this town are looking for? There are times when you have to step back and say, I can't do it as well or as efficiently as someone else, and then give someone else the chance to do that. So I think there are lots of opportunities to reevaluate what we're doing, what people need, and where those opportunities might be for somebody else to help us out.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thanks. Well, this has certainly been the struggle that we've had over, over many years, you know, here in the city of Westminster. We're constantly striving to do more with less, just like everybody's budget at home. You know, things keep getting more expensive, and somehow it doesn't seem like a lot more money comes in than what you had the year before. So, so we're always trying to, to do that. What we've done pretty successfully here in Westminster over the last several years, we've gone, you know, seven years with keeping the tax rate exactly the same as it was the year before. We had a tax increase about 10 years ago, then we shaved a little bit off of it shortly after that, and the rate has stayed the same for the last seven years. So working with that money, what we've done is a couple of things. One is, technology has been tremendously helpful. We've invested in technology, and in some places, that's allowed us to, to transfer a staff position from, you know, one department where, where technology allows to be more efficient and do the work, and, and transfer those resources to another place where we needed a person to be able to do that work. That's one thing we've been able to do, continue looking for those opportunities. Another thing is we've challenged the city staff, you know, because they do their jobs every day, and we say to them, how could we be better at this? How could we be more efficient at this? And we've given prizes for great ideas, and we've had some great ideas out of our staff that have saved us thousands and thousands of dollars that we've been able to use to put those resources in other things. So we'll continue to rely on people who are already doing a great job to come up with good ideas on how to do that job even better and more efficiently. And finally, we've always got to look for ways we can do things that the city does in a more efficient way. One of those things, a great example, is bulk trash up. We're one of the few communities that still does bulk trash pickup, you know, around, around the state. And, you know, we're, we're looking at how we change that. We made a little tweak to how we do that a year ago, and we're probably going to change a little bit again. We're going to keep doing it, we're going to keep picking up people's bulk trash, but we're going to find a more efficient way to do it and save some money.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
So while we didn't raise the current tax rate, the city did not opt to lower it to the constant yield. What that means is basically the city's going to achieve roughly around $305,000 this year in new revenue, new revenues from the property taxes. Now, I haven't analyzed the budget. As part of my daily duties, one of them, I do manage and analyze budgets and look into financial systems, even, even in IT. It's, it's strange. So I don't know what that money is allocated for, but I think that we need to take a deep dive into our financial system. It's my understanding that the city is utilizing a new system. They spent some money to adopt it a number of years ago, and I think that we should basically just take a look into that system, take a deep dive, deep dive into it to utilize the system, and also conduct a financial audit, not from the city workers, but from the council members. Basically, to find the gaps and to fill the gaps in between, to see what we're missing.
Thank you. Mr. Collet?
Thank you. So I consult with small business and medium businesses on a daily basis. And when I'm working with a small business owner to evaluate their budget and their financial situation and their prospects for the future, there are two different avenues that we look at when money is tight. The first one is an immediate opportunity where, yes, we can trim excess if it's available. If it's not available, then there may be a need to consolidate, consolidate and strategically direct the resources that we have to critical functions and to making sure that those critical functions operate at maximum efficiency through responsible planning, procurement, and project management. In the long term, the only way out of a, a financial hole for the city, which basically amounts to a very large business, is to increase revenue. Now, the go-to solution may seem like it's to raise taxes, but there are other opportunities to increase revenue that don't require a tax increase. Seeking new funding opportunities and innovative resources to help fund projects, to help expand programs are all vast, there are vast pools of resources that we don't tap into, either because we don't have the staff to research and pursue them, or because we simply don't know they exist. And tying back into the last conversation that we just had, economic and community development is a huge tool in terms of solving some of the financial strain of the city by increasing both the commercial and the residential tax base. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Dayhoff?
I think one of the most important approaches that we can use utilizes a growing commercial tax base. Historically, Westminster was a very wealthy community based upon mercantilism, classic mercantilism. The unfinished goods were brought into town and traded for finished goods, and the capital concentrated in town. So by reemphasizing growing our commercial tax base will definitely increase our tax revenues. One of the ways that we can do that is by leveraging Ting. We don't have highways, but we have the best highway around, and that is the internet highway. And by leveraging, we have an awful lot of intellectual capital in, in Carroll County and Westminster, and they're all going someplace else to work. So if we could leverage Ting and, and emphasize that approach. The other approach, of course, as we've talked about it a good bit, is we need to reemphasize bringing more water to town. We also need to work with the, the county and the state to bring about that economic contagion. And the other, the other thing I think is really important is the best resource that we have in Westminster is our human resource. We have great city employees. I think we need to look after them a little bit better than we have in the past, and I think they need to be paid better so they can self-actualize. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. For Mrs. Laird. What is your view on future residential development in Westminster, both in the near term and the long term, and how do water issues factor into that?
Future residential development? In my opinion, one of the things that makes this place great and one of the stories that we need to tell more is the story of the families here. I think families make this place wonderful, and each family has a unique story to tell, those with a long history here and those with perhaps a not-so-long history here. So bringing more residents to Westminster is important, but I think also finding a way to encourage a strong sense of pride and ownership among those residents. One of the areas that I've looked at pretty heavily since I've been here is Pennsylvania Avenue and the kind of situation on Pennsylvania Avenue. There are so many multifamily units there, and so many of those homes that were one-time single-family homes. I think it's important that some of those homes be converted back to single-family homes for the historic preservation of what those buildings once were, and also, again, to bring that pride and ownership to those, to those buildings. With so many rentals kind of right there on such a prominent street in the heart of the city, I think it really affects what's happening there and what's happening in the heart of the city. There are plenty of opportunities, I think, to do multi-use facilities, and I think there are some plans out there for that, which I think is very exciting, where there could potentially be, you know, ground-level retail or business and, you know, second or third story apartments or condos. I think that's great. But I think the emphasis on bringing, you know, more people to a single-family situation is, is very important. Obviously, water is a concern, you know, and we want to make sure that everyone has what they need, but I think there are definitely some ideas in place to, to combat that issue, and hopefully, some of those will move forward, so.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you. So I think there, there are a couple of parts to this question when we talk about residential, future residential development in town. The first is looking at the existing housing stock. So one of the challenges we've got in Westminster, we've got a lot of old homes that, that aren't in the kind of repair that they ought to be. And one of the things we've tried to do over the last several years is to be a little bit more aggressive about our code enforcement and trying to make, make sure that people are maintaining their homes, particularly rental properties, in the way that they ought to be doing, so that, so that they're the kind of places that, that we like to see in our town. And, and we've got to do more of that, and, you know, we're, we're going to continue to ramp up those efforts in the future. The second I mentioned before is, you know, we've got to, we've got to do some, some downtown housing, so we've got people living on Main Street or adjacent to it, so that they're, they're able to, to enjoy that, that downtown lifestyle and be able to walk to things and be able to, you know, support the businesses there and enjoy being able to, you know, walk down the street for, for dinner or something in the evening. And, and so I think that's critical as well. So, and the third part is, is new residential development. We've got to be careful about the new residential development that we attract, because we do have a wider challenge. A few years ago, I had a gentleman tell me that he thought that, you know, we needed to stop the growth in Westminster, we needed to have no more houses. And I knew where he lives, and I knew how long, how old his community was, and I said, well, how long have you been in your home? And he said, two months, and the growth's been incredible. And I said, well, I, I understand your concern, but what made yours the last house that should have been built in Westminster? And he didn't have a good answer for me, but I think that, you know, we all, we all like the fact that we've got a community here that's safe, that's, that's pleasant to live in, and, and there's a tendency to want to pull up the drawbridge and not allow anybody else in. But we've got to find ways to find the right kind of modest growth to accommodate the people that we want to have come in, because communities that don't continue to grow start to die.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
I agree with what everyone has said so far. I think we should capitalize on residential renovation, basically just utilize what we have. I'm a big believer in multi-use of, when traveling to other areas, it's really cool to go to their downtown and see the residents living over top of businesses. It adds an extra spice to the community and really gives it a, a life in the nighttime and not. I also think that we do need to concentrate on facelifting our existing properties and to maintain and upkeep them in such a way where we want to be presented, because if I drive by a dilapidated building and I see it run down, then, and I'm a visitor, and that gives me the impression that Westminster's rundown, and it's not the case. It just needs a little bit of love. As far as residential development, I think that we need to come up with a plan of where this development could potentially happen to avoid being overcrowded. We don't want to become a Howard County or a Baltimore County or a Baltimore City. We want to still maintain our agricultural roots and have the people that moved here to appreciate that. Water, of course, we know it's a concern, but recent efforts made by the council have made significant progress, and I think the continuous momentum should be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collet?
All right. So residential growth is obviously a big consideration. Just like one, our, our really genuinely creative solution to our water allocation issues, I believe, like we're reusing water, we also need to start to reuse some of our residential properties. And that can include renovation, maintenance, and even repurposing of existing properties that, that could serve that purpose. Another key element is, and I think neither negative nor positive, I think, I may be the youngest person up here, and one of the key factors in advancing our growth is also making sure that people in their late twenties and early thirties can afford to live here, can afford to make the choice to, to choose Westminster. And one of the keys there is creating workforce housing that...
And one of the keys there is creating workforce housing that people that, that we want to attract to live here find attainable. And the last thing is responsible residential development is a tremendously careful balance between disrupting the vision and goals and, and plans of residents that made the choice to move here some time ago. But I believe it's attainable, and I believe that we can work out solutions that meet the needs of everyone and create a better Westminster for everyone to enjoy.
Thank you. Mayor DeHaaf?
Well, families live in residential developments, and our most important and critical asset in Westminster has historically always been our families and our family structure. Historically, we've always done residential growth extremely well. We've always had thoughtful and controlled growth. Many years ago, when smart growth was brought forward by Governor Glenn Denning, some of the approaches that we used in Westminster was some of the approaches that the state used as a model to adopt statewide. Adaptive reuse is always a good idea. We can take a look at some of the zoning issues that are in town. I'm not a big fan of Euclidean zoning, I never have been. We can look at some of the, the residential business, overlay zones. And actually, a lot of folks from throughout the state are taking a really good look at our water plan. Our water plan is essentially one of the best growth plans that we have in the state. So I think we just need to stay the course and remain constantly vigilant and be thoughtful about our approaches.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert?
I'm pretty much going to reiterate what many people up here have already stated, but since there is a water use concern, and until we really look at that and think about maybe possibly water reuse, we need to look at the current homes that we do have in Westminster and look at the historic value that they have, and think about our zoning laws and possibly changing, changing those laws so that we do go back to homeownership in our historic downtown. We have a lot of gorgeous historic homes that would welcome families and children, and again, bring back that dynamic to downtown Westminster and to the outside of Westminster so that we can encourage family activities and also, in turn, that, that would revitalize the, the buildings and also help with the empty buildings that we have currently in Westminster.
Thank you. Okay. The next question is one that we received several different times in several different forms. It's a long one.
I need to take notes. I need to take notes. Not ask you to re.
All right. This is for Councilman Pecoraro. "In 2010, the Maryland General Assembly unanimously passed legislation requiring local governments to certify to the State Ethics Commission that their conflict of interest and financial disclosure provisions were either equivalent to or exceeded the requirements that state legislatures must meet. The city of Westminster did not complete this process. Will you pledge to resume good-faith efforts to draft and pass a new ethics ordinance that complies with state law?"
Well, that's a, it's a, it's a little misleading. So, so, so we actually, we did comply with the state's requirements. We submitted a plan, and, you know, it's gone kind of back, it's gone back and forth in terms of, of what, you know, of how we fulfill all their requirements. Every year, all of us do fulfill out an ethic statement, laying out, you know, all of our financial obligations and, and situation, and turn that in, and they're all available on file with the city clerk. We continue to try and work with the state to try and resolve this. Other municipalities have had the same challenge. The problem is that small municipalities like ours, you know, we don't do business with, or most of our members don't do business with people in the same way that, you know, you do in a state legislature or, or, you know, if you're, you know, in a, in a larger government. So, yeah, I think the short answer is yes, we continue to try and work with the State Ethics Commission to try and work out the minor difference of opinion that we've got there. I think our plan is substantially in compliance with what they've asked, and, you know, we continue to try and perfect that.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
A lot has been said this evening about government transparency, and I was aware that Westminster is one of the few municipalities that have not complied with the state ethics ordinance. I am a proponent of revisiting this and looking at the current plans that the council has in place. Citizens should know who their council members are, and if they do have any, any interests that are not being represented or are being represented within, in a conflict of interest within their community. I think it's important to, to provide the transparency over the government and to comply with the state laws.
Thank you. Mr. Colletta?
I'll be brief. I will pledge to support any initiative that represents transparency, accountability, and assurance to our residents that all of our elected officials and staff are working in the best interest of our citizens.
Thank you. Mayor?
Yes, we should comply with the existing state ethics law.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert?
Yes, I also agree that we should support the state ethics law. As a 30-year social worker for the Department of Social Services, ethics is always on the forefront of what I do every single day, so that I would definitely be in support of this.
Mrs. Laird?
Absolutely. I think it's important the council regularly revisit this and work to comply with what the state has set forth. Ethical leadership is of the utmost importance, and as everyone has mentioned, transparency and accountability are important as we represent the city and the great people of the city.
Thank you. Okay, we're back to Ms. Carter for this question. "In 2015, the city council accepted a donation of 187 acres from the former Wakefield Valley Golf Course. The property is currently open for walking, running, biking, dog walking, fishing, et cetera, but there's no formal, no formal plans have been approved for the future. What are your thoughts on appropriate future uses for the property, and what uses would you see as unacceptable?"
I'd like to come up with a master plan for Wakefield. This area is so important to our community. It provides our residents with walking trails, parks, it looks like even has a duck pond. There's some areas of the trail that are not open currently, and I would like to look at those areas and, and, and work with the Department of Parks and Recreation to really create a master walking trail and path. I know the park is in need of some upgrades. It's my understanding that some people, while running or walking, have gotten injured There also is an historic property on that property, and it does have historical significance with the origins of the Methodist movement. I think it would be really cool if we utilized that historic property and it'd be an extra way to drive revenue, we could give tours, school systems could utilize it. As far as the trails go, we could put mile markers in, we could have races there. Will you please reheat the second part of your question, the last part?
Sure. No, just in terms of the property, are there any uses you would see as unacceptable?
At the moment, I don't believe so. I really think that the city needs to, to make a master plan for that property and to figure out, in conjunction with Parks and Recreation, how we can best use it to the betterment of our citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Colletta?
Thanks. So a lot of very intelligent men and women have been working hard at this problem for several years now. I would be remiss to sit up here and suggest that I have a silver bullet solution or something I can promise you to solve the challenge that is the Wakefield Valley property. What I can tell you is that establishing a baseline of pragmatic maintenance for the property to ensure that whatever use it does see currently is safe and positive for all involved is obviously a key priority. And then the second step of that approach would be to work with those same intelligent, talented men and women to continue driving toward a solution. Basically, the way I see a role in city council is a neighbor working for their neighbors. And responsible development at the Wakefield Valley Golf Course includes treating the individuals that live on the other side of 31 like neighbors and not doing anything that negatively impacts them and their livelihood and their ability to enjoy their residence in the city, while also taking into account that, at the end of the day, the city does own the property and needs to take steps to figure out a solution, so.
Thank you. Mayor?
The highest and best use for Wakefield Valley is open space. It's been open space since Noah landed. I really don't think we need any houses out there. A hundred years from now, thanks, folks will thank us for preserving the open space.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert?
Well, in the next proposed fiscal budget, there is $25,000 that is allocated to that Wakefield master plan along with, I believe, a grant. But for me, I go to that Wakefield property probably almost weekly with my dog. I love the property. There are several, several ponds on that property. It is, it is actually beautiful. I do think it does need an upgrade. I think we need to clean off some of the stuff that was left from it being a golf course. It needs to be a place for families, picnic tables. You can put disc golf in there, you can put different things in there that still maintains that open space, which I think is important. We, as Westminster, do not have any more open space areas that Westminster owns, and I think that does need to be maintained. There is a building, it is empty on several occasions. I have seen people walk out of that building with backpacks. I do know it is, there, it's got to be being squatted, excuse the term. So I think that needs to be addressed. I think we can use maybe some philanthropic resources to maybe work at rebuilding that building and maybe accessing it, using it for some STEM projects or a building for our kids, our education system, and mainly keeping it as green space.
Thank you. Mrs. Laird?
I agree that maintaining that property as open space is critically important to the town. As Ann mentioned, there are quite a few families that, that use that property regularly. I do, and it's a wonderful asset for this community. I think promoting that, celebrating that, and finding a way to attract more people to Wakefield Valley as a destination would be a wonderful opportunity, but maintaining it as open space is, is definitely important.
Thank you. Councilman?
Well, let me just say, first of all, that we haven't figured out what to do with it yet. Excuse me. But I'm committed to keeping it an open space. I think that's the best use for it. And, and keeping it an open space primarily for recreational use by the community. I was a member of the council at the time when the last major development plan for the property was proposed. Excuse me. And I opposed and voted against developing it as a large housing project, but that would have been a terrible mistake and, and would have had a terrible impact on the surrounding In terms of the unacceptable uses, while we haven't figured out what to do with it yet, unacceptable to me is a high-intensity use that would drive a lot of traffic and activity, that would change the character of what's going on there now, something that would negatively impact the property values of the adjacent communities. The folks that moved there expected to live next to a golf course. It's not a golf course anymore, it can't be a golf course anymore. But, but it shouldn't be so different from what they expected that it changes their quality of life, and I think that's something that we have to keep in mind as we make any plans for it. The other hand, on the other side of the equation, when the city accepted it, I was not on the council when the city accepted the property. They didn't have a plan for what to do with it or, or how to manage paying for it. And, and one of the challenges is, is that it's a big piece of property, and it's expensive to maintain, and we've got to figure that out. We've got to figure out how we're going to maintain, you know, all of this land, if we want to keep trails on it, how we're going to pay for that, how we're going to do all the things that we need to do to maintain it in a way that doesn't just sort of see it turn into a jungle. So it's a big challenge. And it's, but the way I look at it is, it's a legacy project. I mean, the decisions we make about that property will affect the city for generations, and we've got to get it right. And so I've been in no rush to do it because I think it's going to take some time to figure out exactly the right thing to do.
Thank you. Mr. Colletta? We've talked about downtown, revitalizing downtown Westminster a lot in terms of economic development. I'm just wondering, do you, what you think about the future of Town Mall of Westminster, and whether the city and the city council has any role in its viability?
That is a great question. So there are two big challenges in play. One of them is that, at the end of the day, the, the Town Mall site is private property, and so the city is limited in the extent to which it can impact the future development of that site. Other than that, what the city can do is support the owner, support the new owners of the property with a strong economic development plan and approach that will assist them in ensuring that that property gets put to its highest and best use.
Thank you. Mayor?
The Town Mall needs to be revitalized. It's got, there's a long history out there. There's a long history of the city being preoccupied with downtown Main Street and sort of ignoring it out there. It's got a long and checkered history. It's been owned by a series of hedge funds, some of which weren't even in the country. I think they essentially purchased it for the purposes of its depreciation value. We need to somehow refocus the zoning issues, perhaps. Some of it, it just needs to be repurposed. I'll look forward to seeing what we can do with it. It's an important part of town. When I was in office before, I always wanted to pay a lot of attention to them and see what they were doing out there, and I think we need to give them some, some added scrutiny and some added detention.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert?
Well, I agree. Our Town Mall does need a little boost, but again, it is private property, someone does own it, and the role that the city council can play in that is kind of limited at the moment. However, when or if that opportunity arises, I think it would be great to see a little different use on that site. I know a lot of people have seen Owings Mills and the fact that they're now housing above the, above your stores, and I think that would be a great idea. On top of that, I know the use of a mall is no longer quite what's happening in, in 2019. There's a lot of internet shopping, so stores and your, the, the idea of people shopping in a mall are kind of passe, shall we say. So I think definitely rethinking about what can be there. We don't have a bowling alley here, we don't have other services, and that would be something to look at, maybe pulling in some other businesses that would benefit Westminster and, and our families.
Thank you. Mrs. Laird?
I think we can all agree that something needs to be done with the Town Mall. I walked through just the other day, and I think I saw four more stores that were closing. So, you know, we're rapidly heading back to a very empty space. So aside from it being used as a really great place to go walk on rainy days and cold days, you know, you don't see much activity there. I think, you know, this comes back to the, the lack of kind of an economic development arm in the city itself. So, you know, solving that problem, I think, could help. But again, you know, as everyone has mentioned, it's private property, so the role of the city council is, is to some extent limited. I think there are opportunities for some benchmarking. There are a number of communities who have gone, you know, that have gone through similar struggles with similar facilities and found some really great uses. Again, as it's been mentioned, you know, some ideas for multi-use, potentially some residential, potentially some maybe non-traditional resources within that space, moving in some different types of businesses. But I think that'll start just with a conversation. So, you know, so much of, of what we can do starts with that conversation, it's with residents, and it's also with business owners, and in this case, property owners. So I think starting there and opening that line of communication to really have a serious conversation with those, the owners, the new owners, to talk about, you know, what our vision is for that. those, the owners, the new owners, to talk about, you know, what our vision is for that collectively and potentially what their vision is so that we can bring that together strategically to have a unified vision for that space that will hopefully push that area into something more usable and more desirable.
Thank you. Councilman?
So, the good news is, is that there is a new owner of the mall unlike the hedge funds and others who were letting it run down in the years past. And this is an owner who owns and develops, redevelops, and then continues to operate properties like this. So that's the good news, that we've got an owner who I think is committed to the future of the property. And we've seen some positive changes. We've seen a lot more empty stores, but we've also seen a few positive things that are taking place there. And that's good. The mayor has been in touch with the owner, you know, since he took it over on our behalf, and had some conversation, made clear to the owner that the city is committed to doing everything it can do to help them with the redevelopment effort. If we need to make changes in the zoning code or in other things to accommodate their vision, then we're prepared to do that. And I'm sure that the next council will continue to be prepared to do that, whoever's elected, because it's certainly important for the city. You know, others have noted, and I think it's important to think about, you know, how the whole concept of malls has changed as we think about what our expectations are gonna be. You look at Owings Mills, you look at Hunt Valley, you know, these are old malls that once were tremendously nice, high-end shopping, and they've changed. And so clearly, Town Mall is gonna change too, you know, as we go forward. We just don't know what that's going to look like yet. As we do that, I think one of the things that I really want to do is make sure, as I said earlier, that there's a connection between the Town Mall and the downtown. Because that's really a key to our economic development for the city, to connect both those commercial centers. And you think about the kind of development that's taking place at malls these days, they're being converted into sort of fake Main Streets. You know, people are trying to achieve that look. We've got that already. What we need to do is create that connection and make sure that there's a synergy between the two properties that can support them both.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
It's my understanding that the owner of the property, this is something that he specializes in. He takes old malls and he revitalizes them. I'd like to see the owner of the property, of course, work with the city of Westminster, but I'd also like him to do a survey of our residents to figure out what we want there. I mean, it's our mall. So I do think Town Mall needs name change. Some of you remember, it was already changed once before. I'm not sure Town is much better than Cranberry, but maybe like a new name and a facelift would help. But I do think it's important to see what would work best in our community. I kind of envision a mixed-use mentality again there, potentially adding some additional green space. We have a lot of parking lot going on. So I think that would support a family-friendly environment and be right on, online with what the city is trying to achieve with downtown revitalization and economic development.
Thank you. For Mayor Dayhoff, appropriately, do you have any thoughts on what should be done regarding the preservation of historic landmarks in Westminster, such as the City Garage at one sixteen East Main Street, which, correct me if I'm wrong, was built in nineteen twenty-six?
It was built in nineteen twenty-six. That was also the last place where the bus stop was located. I think we need, I think it's one of the, I think it's one of the really important assets that we have in town. Zoning came to town on November fifth, nineteen seventy-nine, and they outzoned a lot of Pennsylvania Avenue. I have a nineteen fifty phone book, and there were more businesses on Pennsylvania Avenue than there were on Main Street. So one of the things that we could look at is zoning. A lot of folks talk about the train station that was torn down in January nineteen sixty-one. It was torn down because of tax policy. So we need to take a look and see what it is that we can do to revitalize and to ensure that we maintain these historic properties for the future. I'd love to see that property revitalized. And that's all about economic contagion. It's about public policy. It's about talking about zoning. It's talking about tax structure. And I think by working together, I think we can do it. I think there's a contagion of thought on the council and all the folks that are running that we take a good look at that.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert?
Yes, I am definitely in favor of preserving all of our landmarks. I'm not quite as eloquently versed as Mayor Dayhoff on that issue. But I would also agree that looking at our zoning laws, looking at those issues, and going back to our historic homes as part of our landmarks also, and again, go back to homeownership to preserve those instead of aiming our focus on folks buying them and using them as rental properties. And that then detracts from the historic preservation and the historic use that it originally was. So, yes, I think we need to embrace our history and learn from it. It also, by embracing our landmarks and revitalizing them, it also teaches our new generations about what occurred in our city. So, yes, definitely going back to preserving landmarks. Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Laird?
I absolutely agree with what everyone has said in terms of preserving the landmarks and how important that is. I believe our historic properties are a huge asset to this town, and the history of this town is one of the things that makes it a wonderful place and a destination for so many people. Telling that story is so important, and no one can tell it better than Mr. Dayhoff. He, as he spouts off dates and shares all those very specific details with us. He's a great proponent of that. But I also, I just think it is of the utmost importance. It brings beauty to this town. I think, you know, it tells a wonderful story of who we are and where this place came from, and a big part of why it is what it is today and what it could be in the future. So I think the preservation of those historic properties is very important, and I will work absolutely to continue that process.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you. So absolutely, we need to continue our commitment to protecting these landmark properties. We've done this in the past very successfully. We've worked with the Maryland Historical Trust, and they've been generous on other occasions in helping us secure funding. For example, the old stone building, which is now Lorden's, when the city originally took that property over from the old farmers' co-op, we went to the Historic Trust, and they gave us a grant to keep it from falling down. And, you know, we were happy to have that. And then, you know, some more money to do some other things. And finally, we were able to repurpose it and turn it into a great attraction for the city. I think we've got lots of opportunities like that on some of those properties. And some of them are just critical to maintain, like the old, you know, the old fire hall and the clock tower there, which has become a symbol of the city. The challenge with historic preservation in a residential setting is that you've got to find the right balance. Some communities do it, do it very well. Other communities do it in a way that preserves the properties but makes all the residents feel unhappy who own the properties. And we've got to find the right balance. You know, you hear people complain all the time about, you know, who live in Annapolis, that we all love the way Annapolis looks, but the people who live in those homes, you know, fight with the historic Annapolis people all the time. Other communities do a great job, and people seem happy. You know, our neighbors to the north, Carlisle, Pennsylvania, is not that far away. I visit there frequently. And they've got a very active historic preservation program there, and the residents seem pretty happy with it. We've got to go learn from other communities and see how they've done it successfully and make sure we're able to import that into Westminster. And we've got to do that with renewed vigor as we try to step up our code enforcement efforts and try and increase the appearance of our housing stock.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
I think it comes down to reviewing and updating the existing city code. I dug into the code a little bit, and a lot of it hasn't been updated since the mid nineteen nineties. A lot has changed since then. I am a big believer in preserving our historic properties, but I want to do it in such a way where it's innovative and it's for the betterment of our city. I recently was in another town, and they took an old steam building, and the train station was attached to it, and they turned it into a restaurant. And what they did was they incorporated the old steam pumps in the ceiling, and they had the coolest train cars that people could sit in while they wait, and they could slide down when they were ready. I mean, it's a great idea. So I think that going to other communities and seeing what they do to protect our historic properties, but we need to do it in what's in line with our vision and for the betterment for the city and our citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Colletta?
So this is a timely question. I've actually served on our Historic District Commission for the last three years. And today, for those of you who have not yet been home, check the mail, many of you should have received a brochure about the city's historic restoration tax credit program. One of the key elements of historic preservation is ensuring that our residents and property owners have the resources that they need, not only to restore and maintain their properties, but to do it with historical accuracy. The challenges of maintaining a historic property are very easily measured in dollars and cents. The cost of a historic renovation project far, often far exceeds the cost of a replacement project with less historical character. So focusing on awareness for our residents and our property owners of the resources that are available to them, not just of the city historic restoration tax credit, but also of similar state and federal programs that can help support them in maintaining their homes, is going to be a key part of our strategy here. Another key part of our strategy is recognizing that we actually have two Historic District overlays here in the city of Westminster. We have the National Register Historic District overlay, which encompasses the vast majority of our downtown area. And we also have a regulatory overlay, which currently includes a whopping two properties. So there are only two properties that the city has any regulatory say in how they are restored and maintained. Looking at opportunities to incentivize and reward property owners for helping to maintain those properties according to our standards is gonna be another key element to that strategy.
Thank you. This one's for Mrs. Gilbert. Where do you stand on a potential ban of plastic bags in Westminster?
I know at the last city council meeting, this was a great discussion for about an hour or so. I am in favor of the ban to a degree. I do not think that Westminster, the council, should hinder our current businesses that already exist and cause more expense for them. There's already the Styrofoam ban and other things that are affecting their cost bases and causing them to essentially lose some money. So, plastic bag ban with an exclusion, maybe fifty employees, maybe twenty-five employees or less, that's always up for discussion, I think would help both sides of the equation. I myself went many, many years ago with my son. We cleaned out the city pond, and I realized how much of a detriment those plastic bags are. How many wildlife animals are killed, how much trash and plastic bottles, everything that is just thrown about. Every day, I go back in King Park, pick up plastic bottles. We are such a disposable nation now. That is, the plastic bag ban is just gonna be a little tiny little piece of this whole equation. But we also need to focus on our Boy Scout troops and our Girl Scout troops and getting a volunteer base to help clean up with all that. Not just ban the small bags that we have, but and look at the K-Marts and the, not the K-Marts, the Walmarts. Boy, did I date myself on that question. But also educate our youth. We need to educate our kids and to show them what throwing this away is doing to our world, along with the plastic bags. We also have to, as I stated before, go back to our Girl Scout, our Boy Scout troops, our businesses. There's tons of people out there who want to volunteer and own our town. We need to go back to own our town and take back and clean it up. Also, put in recycling containers. I'm out of time.
Thank you. Mrs. Laird?
So the question of the plastic bag ban is a complicated question, and there are statistics supporting both directions. The EPA even is against it. But if you look at it as, you know, a bigger issue in terms of an issue for our community specifically, I think it comes down to, as Ms. Gilbert mentioned, an issue of trash and just what we see and the visibility of these things, you know, around the community. I'm for the ban with some exclusions. I agree that small businesses should not be the ones to bear the weight of all of these decisions. And so I think a continued conversation with those, with those members of our community is an important piece of this puzzle. So I know at the last meeting, there was an opportunity for comment. We had quite a few community members come forward with their comments. Some very compelling arguments were made. And I think, you know, continuing to consider the arguments that were made to make sure that this movement, this, you know, this measure is well-written and really does work to benefit our community and to benefit, you know, the city here and to do it for our reasons. I think that will be important. But yes, I am for the plastic bag ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman?
Thanks, Bob. Well, I'm proud to be the sponsor of the plastic bag ordinance that would ban single-use plastic bags. And I did it for the reasons people have already talked about. You just need to drive around or walk around the city, and you can see them everywhere. And, you know, it's not about any kind of a bigger statement than the fact that, you know, we've got a responsibility as the mayor and council and city government to be good stewards of our environment here in the city. And that's what this is really about. The ordinance that we've proposed is, I think, a pretty modest way to go about doing this. You know, it's important to note that nearly four hundred communities across the nation, counties, states, and municipalities have already enacted some type of plastic, single-use plastic bag, you know, ban. And this is in line with what they're doing. Our ordinance, as it's currently drafted, does include an exemption for small businesses. It does include an exemption for restaurants. So when you get your messy-to-go bag of, you know, whatever it is that you happen to have had for dinner, it's not gonna leak all over your car seat. So, you know, we've included that. And, you know, we've given people an entire year to get ready for this. So that's the longest lead time any community has given anybody, you know, to do this. Most times you see this done, they say six months, three months. We've given people a whole year to get ready for this because we don't want anybody to be impacted that way. Since the great story in The Times that people saw, I've gotten a lot of calls on this, and a lot of people have written to me, and they've said, "I went online, and I found these great biodegradable plastic bags that people can use, and hey, looks like they're pretty cheap to me." And they compared them to the cost of the other bags, and they're really pretty close. So maybe that's a big part of the solution for a lot of these folks who are gonna be impacted by this. You know, I, you know, I think it's the right move for the city. I think it is a statement about who we want to be as a city. We want a cleaner community for all of us, and it'll be great for the environment. And I'm glad to be sponsoring it.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
I support taking care of the environment and providing a clean earth for the next generation. I even have a rain barrel in my house. I think that we need to continue to analyze the effect on the small businesses. The bottom line is the small businesses help make our city the city that we all know and love and explore additional benefits that could, additional options that could benefit us all. But I think the plastic bags are only one piece of the puzzle. When walking around town, I notice far more discarded cigarettes, those little small liquor bottles, and just miscellaneous trash on the streets. So I would think that if we're gonna do the plastic bags, why stop there? I propose cigarette dispensers, maybe explore just allowing the sale of the many liquor bottles, potentially recycling canisters. All these things would help make Westminster a cleaner Westminster. Also, I think that we should get the kids involved, and, you know, if the kids need the service hours, get them in. Help them, help them clean up our town, provide that accountability. We could also implement something like a twice-a-year cleanup in the spring and the fall. And it doesn't have to be just trash. They could do a fall cleanup that cut down all the old plants and spring cleanup too. And that would, everything that would help make Westminster a little bit cleaner.
Thank you. Mr. Colletta?
Thanks. So I want to be very clear upfront and say that I am one hundred percent in agreement with all of the other candidates about my support for environmental conservation and stewardship. I think that's an incredible role that we have to serve for both ourselves and for future generations. That said, I am going to come out and say it. I do not support the plastic bag ban in its current form. I think that there's a tremendous amount of scientific- I think that there's a tremendous amount of scientific evidence that plastic bag bans actually can be counterproductive in certain circumstances. One economic concept that, the term is leakage appropriately, is that when you partially regulate a consumer product, like single-use disposable plastic bags, consumption of similar products in other unregulated segments of the economy actually increases. And so in studies, San Francisco passed their single-use plastic bag ban in 2007. They're one of the premier case studies about many different elements of this, but when they passed that ban, the 40 million pounds of plastic that were entering the landfills every year through single-use plastic bags were replaced by an increase in heavy-duty plastic bags, such as trash bags. There are also challenges, and I'm going to run out of time, so I'm not going to talk about them all, like public health issues, where in San Francisco, again, it was actually discovered that situations of ER visits relating to foodborne illness, and actually deaths related to foodborne illness, increased because of the use of reusable bags that were not properly sanitized, so.
Thank you. Mayor?
I support the ban. I look forward to supporting a final version of the legislation that addresses the concerns of the small businesses. Single-use plastic never goes away. In my other life, I farmed for 25 years. I'm not a fan of pulling plastic bags out of bales of hay. Cows don't like plastic bags, and I like cows. The bags seem to be a major component of the litter and the trash strewn throughout the town. My brother is a waterman. The stuff is everywhere in the water, and it never goes away. I think the ban is a step in the correct direction. I ran a small business and a farm for 25 years. I understand full well how hard it is to keep on the lights in the face of incremental erosion of profit margins. Inevitably, single-use plastic is going to get banned everywhere. It's going to get banned statewide, it's going to get banned nationally, it's going to get banned internationally. It's just not good for the planet, and good planets are hard to find. So I say let's get ahead of the curve and take a step in the direction of banning single-use plastic bags.
Thank you. For Mrs. Laird. I think everybody, everybody touched on public safety when, you know, in their opening statements, but we haven't really had a specific question on it. So, I'm just wondering, do you have any thoughts regarding what are the biggest problems in terms of crime in Westminster? And do you have any specific ways? Obviously, everybody seems to be pretty happy with the direction we're going, but are there any specific solutions that you would propose to try to get, you know, Westminster a little bit safer?
Specific solutions? I have never worked in the world of public safety, so I don't know that I am the expert in any way to be giving you the solutions necessarily. But I think it comes down to a conversation. So, you know, involving the residents and businesses and bringing them together to talk about what ideas there might be, I think it's a big conversation, and everyone has their opinion of where we stand currently and where we're headed. I think, as, you know, many of us mentioned earlier in some of the previous questions, Chief Ledwell is moving us in the right direction. Things are improving, and we've seen that in the few short months that he has been in his current role. And I think that, you know, continuing to work with him and then, you know, work with his officers is important. I think at the end of the day, you know, retention of our officers is hugely important, so finding a way to ensure that we're providing them with the best opportunities that they can possibly have, making sure that compensation is adequate for them, giving them opportunities to really be an important part of this community and make sure they know that they are, I think that's very important. You know, when we spend the time to train these people and they become familiar with our community and the people in this community and the concerns of the community and start to formulate ideas on how to combat some of the issues that we have, and then they leave, we have to start all over again. So I think, you know, for me, first and foremost, it's making sure that we have a strong public safety team, and from there that they are remaining in place. And then, like I said, from that, from that perspective, also continuing that conversation, getting the community involved. I mentioned that early on, you know, transparency and finding a way to make this a community where people are more involved, and I think this is one of the key areas. You know, everyone should come forward, and let's talk about those ideas and how we can do it, and what everyone's biggest concerns are in terms of public safety.
Thank you. Councilman?
So, it's impossible to capture in two minutes the entire two-hour interview we had with Chief Ledwell when we, when we talked with him about taking on the job as chief. But he expressed so well the ideas that a lot of us had in a very disciplined and organized way about a concept that's generally known as community policing, and that's what he's, he's starting to implement here in the city, doing it very successfully. I want to say first off that I'm so proud of our police officers and the way that they have embraced what the chief is trying to do and the direction he's moving us in. They've really stepped up, and it's really exciting to see. I had the opportunity just the other morning to visit them at their, at their 6:30 a.m. shift change, as some new guys were coming on. We were doing an employee appreciation event and to talk with them about it a little bit. And I think they're already seeing the difference as well, and so that's, that's really exciting. You know, basically, you know, we're going to get the police, you know, more engaged with the community. Yeah, and you've probably seen that already, these guys are getting out of their cars, you know, they're walking into the businesses, they're talking with people on the streets, they're really engaging with the community in an entirely different way than we've done in the past, and that's absolutely the direction we need to go. There are a lot of other changes that are coming along those lines as the chief rolls those out with, with the department. You know, we're going to see more and more, you know, it's going to be more and more visible what's happening, and I think we're going to see, I think we're all going to feel better about, about, you know, public safety in Westminster. But just sort of a few seconds left, I want to say that there's, there's another piece about public safety, public safety we don't talk about enough, and that's fire safety. We've got a volunteer fire department here in this town. We are sitting in their building right now, and, you know, the Westminster Fire Department has been an incredibly important part of public safety in this community for a long time. They're underfunded. The city contributes to them in a way that other communities don't across the county. The county doesn't fund them enough. The funding system is very unfair, and I want to continue to fight for adequate funding for the city fire department.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Safety, I don't, I don't think that safety can be accomplished by doing it alone. We, we need to continue to work with our police and, and even the partnership that we have with the county and the sheriff's department to, to help us. When we had some drug issues that were pretty severe about a year ago, we partnered up with the county and they got their task force in and the addition with the drug dogs, and that, that made a big difference, and we were able to stop some people that had been a problem in our city for quite some time. So I think that we just need to continue to create awareness in the community. It's the old adage, if you see something, say something. I also think that we could utilize technology to help, visit other communities for input. Of course, continue to concentrate on recruitment and retention, potentially even exploring tax credits for our city police to purchase housing so they can live here and work here. If they lived here, maybe they wouldn't leave. Of course, salary is always a concern too, and find ways to help them, because bottom line, they're protecting us, so we have to protect them.
Thank you. Mr. Colletta?
Thanks. So, there's a two-pronged challenge here when it comes to ensuring that our law enforcement have the resources that they need to adequately do their jobs. And the first is that the department itself is adequately funded and has the resources and training they need to do their jobs well. But obviously, the second is that our, the other resource that we have in the form of our experienced men and women in uniform also need to be taken care of in a way that's commensurate with the job that they do. So ensuring that the results of the pay study the city has conducted to provide our police officers with fair pay are continue, continue to lead to development in that system, ensuring that our police officers have the conditions that they need to work here effectively. And also creating open lines of communication between our residents and our city police is incredibly important, so, but it's also a delicate balance between what the police are legally allowed to share and what they're not. So having a trained and experienced public information officer that can support that communication from the city to the public, I think is going to be a key part of that puzzle. And the last thing is the vibrant communities are safer communities, hands down. So, you know, this is part of a comprehensive solution that involves economic development, public safety, and a brighter community.
Thank you. Mayor Deoff?
I'm a fire and police chaplain, and I'm also a public information officer. I do death notifications with police officers. I ride along with them in the middle of the night. I covered cops' courts in crime for a number of newspapers for a number of years. I covered crime in Baltimore for quite a number of years. What I'm looking at is transitioning to the principles of community policing. Community policing is not a formal set of rules or procedures, but a mindset and a philosophy. There's four basic tenets to community policing. One is the service orientation. Police officers are paid professionals who are hired to assist the community in maintaining law and order and the citizens' quality of life. Two, community empowerment. Those living in our communities are in the best position to understand the problems that are adversely affecting their quality of life. Number three, police officers are facilitators. Police officers are the most visible representative of government as they are in the field 24/7. Problem-oriented policing. Traditional law enforcement is not always successful in solving crimes and resolving problems that impact the quality of life in our community. The major faults lie in its reactive nature and its inability to solve the underlying problems that are leading to crime and disorder. The way to approach it is SARA, S-A-R-A. It's a problem, it's a problem-solving matrix, which involves one, scanning, two, analysis, three, response, and four, assessments. I think by working together, we're in the correct direction, and I think we're going to solve this problem.
Thank you. Ms. Gilbert?
Safety. A lot of people think immediately when you think of safety, you think of the police. Well, it's not just the police, but our fire services and our EMTs. We need to make sure and ensure that we not only have continued well-trained professionals as we, as we currently do, but that those professionals have the resources that they need. 30 years ago, I don't think there's anyone in this room who would have realized or even thought that fentanyl would be laced in all the drugs that are out in our world today, and that the overdose rate is what it is. But it is, and again, we had to supply our EMTs with Narcan and educate them and equip them, along with other folks in our community. As our times change, we also have to think about those supplies and the needs that, that come with that. I think we also, again, need to look at our homeless, our mental health. Our mental health rate has, and, and the addiction issue has gone up and skyrocketed. We need to address that. We need to look at it and sit down at a table and collaborate and try to come up with issues to help not enable our citizens, but help them. So, for me, safety is not just supporting our police officers, but also all aspects of our community.
Thanks very much. And I think we've pretty much come to the end of the question session. We're running low on time, and I want to appreciate, I really appreciate all of your answers, and thank you very much. And now, if we could each take two minutes to make one final plea for the votes, I guess. So if we could start with Councilman Pecorero.
Thank you, Bob. Again, thanks to our sponsors for bringing this program to you tonight. I'm Greg Pecorero, and I love being part of this community. I hope this program has been helpful to all of you to get a good idea of who we are and what we would each bring to the council. I spent a lot of time in many years, over many years, trying to work to improve Westminster. I was a founding member of the Greater Westminster Development Corporation that was mentioned earlier. I've been a council member off and on for many years. I've been an active volunteer in the community in youth programs through the YMCA, been active in my church, and a lot of other things in the community. I think I bring unmatched experience to this job, and I hope that I'll have the chance to continue to put that to work for all of you. One of the things I enjoy most about city elections is that I find it energizing. I really like talking to citizens and getting ideas from them, finding out what their concerns are, and some of the best ideas that I've had on the council are things that people have talked to me about when I've been out campaigning, knocking on their doors and visiting with them. And I think that, you know, it's a great experience for all of us to be able to go out and be able to talk to voters and, and share with them what we've been doing for the last four years. I hope you've been happy with the way I've represented you over the last four years, and hope that you'll vote to return me to the council. I encourage you to visit my Facebook page for more information. Please feel free to message me or email me if you have any questions. Be glad to chat with you if I haven't had the chance to do so already. Again, I hope you'll vote for Greg Pecorero and return me to the council for another term next Tuesday, along with two, two other of these fine people that are up here with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
I want to thank the Community Media Center for taking the time and initiative for this forum, as well as the members of the community who are present this evening. As a candidate for the Westminster Common Council, I hope this evening provided to you with the valuable information you need to make a decision on Tuesday. As members of the community, you took an important step by being here this evening. Being a member of the community is more than just a common zip code, is a place where people come together to support common causes and interact by sharing community activities. My vision for One Westminster includes concentrating on a collaborative environment between the government and our citizens to promote responsive communication. This experience has been, quite honestly, like a true privilege. It's been exciting, overwhelming. This forum has been nerve-wracking in many ways, but it's also been an experience I probably will never forget, and so I thank you for that opportunity. Again, citizens, council member, former mayor, current mayor, and the Carroll County Times, thank you for this time this evening. On Tuesday, you will have a chance to have your voice heard, a chance to make a difference, and a chance to shape the future of Westminster. My name is Kate Carter, and I'm asking for your vote on Tuesday. Good night.
Thank you. Mr. Colletta?
Thank you. So, I want to echo my fellow candidates' thanks to our sponsors with the Community Media Center and the Carroll County Times for helping to keep our community informed about both the issues and the candidates that are running to represent them. If there are three things that I hope that I've conveyed to you this evening, the first is that I don't believe in Band-Aid solutions. I believe in comprehensive, proactive, and strategic ideas and plans that can help us responsibly and effectively address some of the really big issues that our community faces. The second thing is that I am a big believer in partnerships. We don't have the financial means to throw money at every problem and to buy our way out of every challenge. And so what that means is that we need to look to our partners at the county, at the state, and even at the federal level to find the resources, the training, and the support that we need to overcome some of these issues. And the last thing that I hope that I've conveyed to you is that I am not an expert on a lot of different things, but I am ready to listen, to learn, to support our folks that are experts, and to do whatever I can to prioritize the growth and revitalization of Westminster as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
This was great. I loved it. This is a great group. I really want to take another turn in City Hall because I know I can make a difference. I've written about government, public policy, and history for many years. I stick with six historically proven, fiscally prudent, and socially responsible, open and affirming back-to-basic principles. Number one, conservative fiscal responsibility, which includes expanding our commercial tax base and giving taxpayers a proper return on their money. Two, public safety. The Public Works Department, the Westminster Police and Fire Department play a basic and critical role in our quality of life, and they need our renewed support. critical role in our quality of life and they need our renewed support. Three, promoting citizen- and community-based grassroots customer-service-oriented government. Number four, I will support our historic downtown business district by working to continue to attract special events, businesses, shopping, and local jobs. Number five, enhancing family quality of life to include expanded recreational opportunities and emphasizing basic municipal services. Number six, I will maintain a continued emphasis on developing more water resources and maintaining our roads, sidewalks, trails, and recreational opportunities. I have a thorough knowledge of the history and traditions of the city with a keen eye for some future changes. It would be an honor and a privilege to have another opportunity to take another turn as a Westminster elected official. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilbert?
Thank you, Bob, Mr. Harrison, and the Community Media Center for hosting this and for allowing us this opportunity for this evening. And thank you, everyone, for being here. I believe collaboration is the key to working as a person on the city council. I would like to represent Westminster's interests and I'm willing to learn. As already stated, I can tell you I do not, I am not the expert on a lot of these issues, but I'm willing to learn. I'm willing to ask polite but the necessary tough questions to ensure that the taxpayers get what they deserve. So, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you. And Mrs. Laird?
I would also like to thank the Community Media Center and Carroll County Times, Mr. Harrison, and Mr. Bluebough for your time. I also want to thank the audience, both here physically and virtually. First of all, for your thoughtful questions and also for taking the time to get to know each of us here. And I want to high-five everybody up here. I think it's awesome that you've all joined me and that we can all be up here together, putting ourselves out there and stepping up in hopes of being a part of what I'm sure will be an increasingly bright future for Westminster. I look forward to bringing a fresh perspective to an important government office as a local leader willing to step up to do the sometimes very difficult work required to maintain, attract, and retain both proud residents and proud businesses here in our community. I look forward to serving the great town that we live in and the people who make it great, to hearing your concerns and working with you to make this place a place we can all continue to be proud of. I can't tell you enough how much I've enjoyed this experience. I thought Westminster was awesome before and after this, even more so. So thank you for the time and the opportunity to be a part of this.
Thank you very much. Thanks, all of you. Mr. Harrison?
All right, thank you, Bob. We want to take this opportunity to thank the candidates for joining us this evening and your openness, your candor, your responsiveness to those questions is much appreciated by the audience. I also want to take the opportunity to thank our moderator for this evening, Mr. Bob Bluebough, editor of the Carroll County Times. In particular, I want to take the opportunity to thank our audience with us this evening and especially those of you that contributed those questions to our candidates. But before we go, I'd like to encourage each and every one of you to learn more about all of the candidates that are participating in the municipal, the 2019 municipal elections. And you could do that by visiting the Community Media Center Voters Guide at the communitymediacenter.org and learn more about these candidates. We would also encourage each and every one of you to get informed, stay involved, and most of all, be certain to remember to vote this coming, or next week. Please travel safely on your way home and thank you all again for participating this evening. Good night and take care.